Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of November 6, 2024 is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcasted live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's website, glendaleca.gov backslash live. On youtube.com backslash myglendale and on Apple TV, Roku and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Cablecast and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city's website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov backslash agendas. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glandaleca.gov. And with that, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Trocian absent. Commissioner Fuentes?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Minasian?
Here.
And Chair Shavazian?
Here. Can we have the reports regarding posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for the November 6, 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on October 30th, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you for that. And approval of minutes from October 16 meetings. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
All right. With that, I do not see... I don't see any oral communication at this time. And so we move to the next item, Board and Commission Member Comments. Commissioners? No comments. Okay. And no old business. On the new business, I wanted to rearrange the items on the agenda. We have two items on the agenda for new businesses, Items A and B. We're gonna go with Item B first. And that is if... We don't need a vote for that, right? We can just go ahead with that list up.
You can afford to reorder the agenda.
We are gonna do Item B, and that is 3240 Menlo Drive, PTM 003171-2024. Can we have the project description, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. The first item before you this evening is a proposed parcel map located at 3240 Menlo Drive. The existing 2.5-acre site is located on the east side of Menlo Drive at the terminus of the street. And the site is owned R1R with a floor area ratio District 2. All right, the location map. The project site is roughly outlined in red. And the adjacent streets, Menlo in blue, Glencoe sort of ends at adjacent to the subject site. And then the main street, or more main street... More main street vickers. Oh, thank you, yes. Sorry about that. All right, so the outline of the site is in red. Aerial view from Google, again, a rough outline of the site is in red. You can see the existing house on the site sort of in the western portion. Right in this area. And then, as you can see, the surrounding neighborhood is developed with single-family homes around to the north, south, and west. And then aside, or actually on the east side, this area is owned special recreation. It is undeveloped. Here's another aerial view of the site. The house on the site now, you can see very clearly here. Part, the proposed parcel B is roughly in this area. And actually, the subject site is... This is just a partial view of the subject site. It goes further. Further above. All right, as mentioned previously, the subject site is 2.5 acres. The applicant is requesting approval of a parcel map to subdivide the site into two parcels. Parcel A will be 27,727 square feet and will include the approximately 5,600-square-foot house. And that's located in this area. Parcel B will be approximately 81,434 square feet and is currently undeveloped. And that is in this area here. Roughly the dividing line between the two, just I highlighted it, is this black line. And the intent of the parcel map is for parcel B to be developed with a single-family house. I've got a series of pictures of the subject site. Next. The first photo is looking east between the proposed parcels A and B. The existing house is to the left, and a small portion of parcel B is shown, which is roughly this area. The chain-link fence roughly divides, is the dividing line between the two parcels. And you can see the chain-link fence right here. The next photo is looking southeast toward parcel B. Development of parcel A, you can see in the foreground. And then the applicant will need to improve the street, Menlo Drive, for the entire frontage of the parcel. So you can see a barrier right here. Behind this barrier, the street is not improved. The applicant will need to improve the street to the far end of the parcel B property line. The next photo is looking east and shows parcel B. Again, the chain-link fence is roughly the boundary between, or the boundary of the subject site. So roughly the boundary. This area here is roughly where the street extension will go. The next photo is looking northeast toward parcel A. You can see a small portion of the existing house right here. Proposed parcel B is in the foreground. And then the flat area is roughly where the street extension will occur. And then the final photo is looking southeast at the corner of Menlo Drive and Glencoe Way, sort of a L intersection. This photo shows the southwest portion of parcel A, and site development can be seen in the distance. So you can see some retaining walls here, as well as here, and then landscaping on that site. So as part of the parcel map application, the applicant is required to provide some conceptual plans that show a proposed development just to ensure that the newly-created lots can in fact be improved and developed on. So the next three slides show conceptual plans of the proposed single-family residence. As you may know, the single-family residence will need to be eventually approved by the Design Review Board. And this board will ensure that the proposed residence is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and consistent with the Hillside Design Guidelines. Additionally, while the conceptual plans for the residence appear to comply with the R1R development standards, when a design review application is submitted, a more detailed review of the regulations will be performed at that time. So this is kind of a straight-on view of the sort of proposed house, potential house. All of it is the front. This is looking, this would be looking from Menlo Drive direction. It's probably, the street isn't probably that wide, so this is probably a little bit further on private property, but it's basically from Menlo Drive. And then kind of an uphill look at that. All right, the proposed parcel map complies with the city's general plan. The land use element designation for the site is low-density residential, allowing 1 to 8 units per acre. As I've mentioned before, the proposed parcel map will allow two single-family homes on a 2.5-acre site. The city's circulation element classifies Menlo Drive as a local street. This street is adequate to serve the needs of the surrounding community, as well as the proposed development. Installation of street improvements will be required across parcel B, as I've mentioned. Noise attenuation features will be required in the design of the proposed single-family house as it is in an area where noise levels are between 65 and 70 CNEL. Additionally, construction associated with the eventual project will be required to comply with the city's noise ordinance. Thus, the proposed parcel map is consistent with the noise element. The project is consistent with the city's housing element and contributes in a small way with meeting the city's RENA numbers. The development contributes to providing a wide range of housing types and is well-designed as the design of the parcel map follows the site topography and existing drainage improvements. What you didn't see in the pictures, and I'm not sure they really showed it, was there's kind of a drainage ditch between the developed portion of the property and the undeveloped. And that, the proposed lot line basically follows that ditch. No historic significance is associated with either the existing house or the site. With regard to the safety element, the proposed site is not located in a mapped liquefaction area or a landslide hazard area. There are no active faults across the property. However, the project is located in a fire hazard zone. And then to minimize damage due to fire, the proposed project, the eventual house, will need to comply with applicable fire prevention, vegetation management, and construction requirements. The project complies with the recreation element and will be subject to the parks' development impact fees. That fee is used to fund park projects throughout the city, parks and recreation. Almost done. The project complies with the open space conservation element. There are no scenic vistas within or within view of the subject site. Additionally, as you may have noted, and I'll put this up again, really only the western one, the third of the site, is being developed. So the remainder will be left in its natural state. As part of future proposed development of the single-family house, the applicant will be required to represent street trees, as well as protected trees, on the site plan. Most of the protected trees on the site now are located in that area where I showed you the picture of the developed portion of parcel A with the large trees. So that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the project with conditions contained in the draft motion, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for that thorough presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions from staff?
No.
I just wish the builder good luck. It's gonna be a big project.
With that, let's open the public comment period, and I only have one card. Mr. Mardeosian, hello?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity. In continuation to Mr. Kiesel's description of the project, the parcel itself is 2 and 1/2 acre. And the purpose of dividing this lot, the way that we divide it is just to meet the Glendale Municipal Code as far as the size and the width and the areas are. The average lot sizes within that zone, which is R1R, within 500 radiuses, around 11,000 square feet. Due to the size of the property that we have, our average sizes are 54,000, which is in the margin of 4 to 1. So we're meeting all those requirements. Again, another portion of the municipal code that we are meeting is the width of the lots that for the R1R is 100 feet, and we have 256 feet on one of them and 108 feet on the other one. So we are meeting all the requirements of the zoning and municipal codes for this parcel map. And the way that the architect has designed the house is to be closer to the street so we can minimize the amount of the grading that we do on the hillside area. The amount of grading that we are proposing to do is around 2,800 cubic yard of the cut and 200 cubic yard of field, which is almost around 2,600 cubic yard of export that we're gonna do, which is, part of it is, depends on the improvement of the street that we're gonna do it and we're gonna extend the improvement all the way to the end of our property. So we are meeting all the requirements of the city municipal code and zoning codes. And I already read all the conditions by staff, and we will comply with all those conditions. And if you have any question, I'd be more than happy to answer it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from Mr. Mardeosian? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't see any cards. Do we have anyone online for this item? Thank you.
We do. We have one caller, Kathy Kay.
Thank you.
Ms. Kay? Hello? You're on the air with the Planning Commission? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me, Ms. Kay? Hello? I can put her on hold for a couple minutes. I actually, I remember talking to this woman yesterday on the phone. So let me put her on hold while you maybe do some discussion.
Of course. And I hear the phone ring. Maybe she's trying to call back. I don't know if you can check the channels as well, but in the meantime, Commissioners, were there any discussions? Any questions from staff while we wait for the comment? Okay, let's wait and before we start deliberating.
Please take forward.
Yeah.
Ready to move forward.
Let's wait for the comment.
Hello, Ms. Kay?
Hello, yeah.
You're on the air with the Planning Commission. Thanks. Sorry for the mix-up.
That's okay. I don't know if I should go ahead with my question?
Hi, you have three minutes, and we are listening. Please go ahead.
Yeah, the question I had was partially answered by the speaker you had. Okay. Hi, the question I had was somewhat addressed by the gentleman who is speaking, but the concern I have is the amount of grading because it's a very steep area. I think I need to turn down my screen because I'm going back at my side.
So we can hear you clearly. I would recommend for you to maybe walk away from your TV or your monitor because you are delayed a few seconds, and it's probably echoing for you.
Okay, so you know, the question I have is concerning, we actually are up on the rise on the east end of the property. And concerned a little bit about the degree of disruption of the hillsides and the slopes. And I don't know, you know, how to really address those concerns. I imagine that the engineering involved in the project is going to look at that, but I was just looking for a little bit more reassurance of how that gets handled.
Thank you for the comment. You know, Mr. Mardeosian, I'm gonna call you to come back and maybe address that question. But while you do come back, I want to, Ms. Kay, just one thing I'll address is that during this item, the item that we have here is a parcel map approval. So specific comments regarding design, there are other steps throughout the process that you'll be able to address. And one other thing is that this design is not final, as our senior planner mentioned. Mr. Mardeosian, if there's a quick answer you can give them, please go ahead. But, Mr. Kay, in the meantime, just follow up the process, I would say, with the city as this goes through. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
As part of the plan development, once we got our, received our approval, we're gonna develop a grading and drainage plan that clearly shows how we're gonna grade the site, where we're gonna take the dirt out, and where our retaining walls are gonna be. That will minimize the amount of the grading at the time that we develop our grading plan. As part of the drainage and the grading, we're gonna provide the erosion control plan as well just to protect the area of the grading so all the muds or debris doesn't go on the public street. So that will come at another part of the development that we're gonna propose to do it at the Design Review Board and later at the building permit stages.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I think the comment period is closed, and thanks for your comment.
We have two, actually, more callers.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we had a caller. It looks like the call dropped. If you would like, please call back and...
Let me open up the other caller, see maybe. Hi, this is Roger Kiesel in the Glendale Planning Department. You're on the air with the Planning Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, Roger, I can hear you.
Okay, you are actually very faint to us. We can barely hear you.
Okay, we could take you off the speaker, I think.
Thank you.
How about now?
It's a little bit better, but we'll be very, very quiet here, and if you could speak up as much as possible, that would be great.
Okay, fantastic. I am the next-door neighbor to this parcel that they're trying to subdivide. When we purchased our property, the idea was we were paying a lot of money for our property because there weren't that many homes next to us. They built one half on this parcel, and they created so many issues and problems when they did that. We're not, well, we're totally against allowing these people to subdivide and build another house on the same lot and create the same type of issues that they've created before.
Was that all you had?
That's basically, yeah, we're completely against allowing these people to subdivide and create another residential home and kind of... to subdivide and create another residential, uh, home and, uh, kind of overcrowd the street. There was, the idea that we moved here is because there weren't that many homes next to us.
Okay.
Uh, why are we allowing them to have two residential homes on the same property?
All right, thank you. Um, you know, before, uh, before you hang up, if we could get your name, I would appreciate it.
Uh, name is Walod Keshishian.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Keshishian.
Okay.
Thank you, and I, I think we have one more comment? Do we have one more comment?
We have no more callers.
Okay, thank you.
The second caller that got disconnected was the other caller.
Got it, thank you so much. Uh, with that, public comment period is closed, and do we have, um, any discussions, Commissioners?
I'm ready to move the, uh, the motion. Um, you know, with that said, uh, I echo your comments, Madam Chair. There is, uh, many steps along the way, uh, during the process, uh, for you to, uh, be vigilant, uh, and, you know, comment on this, uh, whole process for the whole route, for the dust control, you know, for the, all this trucking that's going in and out. So you do have that opportunity, but, you know, our job here is to, to approve this, uh, project parcel map, so I'm here to, uh, move.
I'll second it.
Sounds great. With that, can we have the roll call, please?
Sure, um, Commissioner Minasian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
And Chairperson Shabazian.
Yes, thanks. And with that, uh, next item on the agenda, let me go back on my packet, and I see a lot of people in the room, uh, but I only have three cards. So if you're here to have any public comments for the next item on the project, which is a project, uh, located at 1015 North Central, please fill out one of these green cards. Uh, they're just behind this, uh, this wooden partition. Thank you, sir. Uh, so you can be called, um, to give your comments. Okay, with that, can we please have the, um, presentation? Thank you.
Um, so this is for 1015 North Central?
I'm so sorry, I forgot to mention, yes, sorry. Next item on the agenda is 1015 North Central, uh, and let me go back to my, um, full name for the project, uh, on, on the packet. Um, let's see, thank you, sir, here. Um, 1015 North Central Avenue PCUP, uh, thank you, sir, 002795-2024 and PVAR 00003198-2024, appeal hearing. Thank you.
Sure, um, I'll actually hand it over to our city attorney's office.
Sounds great, thank you. Hello?
Hello, good evening, Planning Commissioners, Chair Shabazian. Um, my name is Yvette Nukin with the City Attorney's Office. Um, I just wanted to, uh, before we dive in, uh, to let the Planning Commission know that the City Attorney's Office, um, just, uh, reviewed this, um, a short time ago. We were not able to do anything about it being, you know, published and noticed, and so we're moving forward at the hearing, but we do recommend that, um, the item be remanded back to the planning hearing officer, or alternatively, if the Planning Commission wishes, they can continue that item so that the, um, staff can bring back some additional information. And the reason we're recommending one of these two options is because there's some information that we believe is necessary that, um, the Planning Commission has to make a threshold determination whether, um, the buildings or structures related to this project, um, are historic. Um, and there doesn't appear to be sufficient information or evidence or analysis for the Planning Commission to, to do so. Now, if the Planning Commission does want to move ahead, we would strongly suggest a continuance. Uh, a remand would also be an option. Um, I would ask if maybe the Planning Commission wants to open it up to the public to take testimony on just those narrow issues, on the remand or the continuance, if they wish to follow our advice.
Uh, thank you. Um, what would, so the, the options are continue or remand. I, I don't think we have ever had, so what would that entail? I don't think I've ever, so what would that mean? Uh, that means the, the, uh, hearing officer would, would have a, we would have a hearing officer basically review this case again.
Yes.
And then make a decision. Okay, I understand. And then my next question is, we do have cards and we have the public here, um, would it be possible, um, to hear the public and what they have to say, uh, and then maybe take those notes?
Just on the remand or the continuance and not on the case?
Not on the case.
Yeah, because, I apologize, yes, because, uh, the, the, that decision, if you're, if you're holding a, sort of a mini-hearing to get, uh, thoughts on the remand, that would, that would go back to the planning hearing officer. You wouldn't necessarily want to take testimony on the core issue.
Got it, thank you. I think Commissioner Lee, yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think if it's like choice of the remand or the continuance, I think it's better for us to decide here rather than, uh, hear the public hearing on that. And I recommend if there are some new evidences, uh, for hearing officer to consider, uh, avoid to go back to the officer and remand it back to hearing officer.
Yeah, I agree. I think, um, the, um, audience or everybody that's here also should know that you will be again noticed or notified when the new hearing will take place with the hearing officer.
If we could perhaps, Planning Commissioners, ask if there's anyone in the audience that, maybe the applicant or, um, anybody that wishes to comment on or testify regarding the remand or the continuance.
What, what was that, sir?
There's a remand, yeah. Uh, applicant.
I have the applicant here, actually, um, and I have the consultant. Um, I think I'm gonna call the applicant to come forward, um, and then, uh, we're gonna hear the, uh, and I wanna hear the, uh, hold on, this is wrong, and I wanna hear the, uh, the, what is, where, where did I go? And the consultant on the project, so, um, and this is only regarding the, you know, two options that were just given.
So, uh, as I'm understanding, there's no decision gonna be made?
That's correct, yes.
So, you're leaning towards continuation of this?
It would be either continuation or it would go back to, um, the hearing officer.
Okay.
And I would appreciate it that you, uh, state your name, sir.
Yeah. I am Aram Alajedian. I'm the project architect of 1015, uh, North Central Avenue, is the, uh, the church being under remodeling.
Yes.
Uh, I'm gonna be very brief, and then I will introduce you with our consultant, who's the historian, uh, very credible one, Pam O'Connor, you know, she'll follow me on this. And we're gonna be very brief today because, you know, I, I do understand the process a little bit. Uh, let me just say that when we begin this project about two years ago, the church has purchased the property, and, uh, from the initiation of this, we have, um, had meetings with the city staff and the management. We wanted to make sure that this building is not historic. It's not in the register of the City of Glendale, it's not in the historic register of State of California or a federal government. Uh, we done our own research, you know, permit research and all that. I find out there's a lot of gap between what's being historic and what's not. There was a building that was built, uh, and it's, the permits are with me, it's in the pocket that we submitted this alongside with the, uh, with our drawings, you know, I'm not gonna talk about the architecture unless you have any questions on that. However, you know, those permits were pulled, and the first building was built in 19, in my understanding, was 1940, uh, and, uh, after 1948, they pulled another permit on this, on this property. They built this, they built this new building, which is not a church, it was an L-shaped building, uh, you know, it's on the, on the Coppin, uh, uh, report. Uh, and after, in 1952, they demolished the original church building, so, which was the originally built. And, uh, in 1950, the tower and a little room was added, tacked on to the building. So, as an architect myself...
I'm very sorry, I'm gonna stop you, and, and I completely understand, we've actually read the, uh, the report. Uh, I think what we wanted to, or I wanted to hear was, so the two options that were given, um, I just wanted to hear kind of, you know, your feedback on that, because at this point, this is...
Well, I'm getting to that.
Sure.
One second, please.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Okay, so it took us about two years to get to here.
Mm-hmm.
And it's taking time and the money for the, you know, for the church to keep this going, you know, and, and I do understand the opponent of this project is trying to prolong this, and it's not fair, and it's not fair. And we're getting this letter again, the 11th hour. We got the letter in July 20, uh, July 30th, right before the hearing, when everything was, uh, conveyed to us, that we are on, uh, um, on board with the, with the city requirements and so forth, with our, uh, I'm sorry, with our variance in the CUP requirements. Uh, and the 11th hour disappeared and they, it kind of delayed this until November. Now, in the 11th hour, we're getting another letter that's gonna delay us. So, if you folks are thinking of denying this thing, so we should go to the city council who is gonna make the decision, so be so, because, you know, timing is an essence for us. That is all I'm gonna say. And I have, I really want you to hear, uh, Pam O'Connor, that spent the time and did a little research on that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sir, I, I think you're misunderstanding the process here. Uh, what we wanna, so continuance means that, uh, it's not gonna go back to the staff, to the hearing officer, but this body, commission, will review your case based on what we have.
I see.
But city attorney needs to review some documents to just make sure they prepare and then also assist us in our decision-making. The other option is take, you know, put, uh, uh, you know, put the case back on the, uh, hearing officer's, uh, desk for her to review it. So, I think that's the option that we're...
We only have two options now.
Yes, that's what we are asking you to, so if you want us to consider this, review this, uh, then we'll do a continuance, so...
So, when we're talking about the continuance, what are we looking at? A week?
I, I was gonna ask, uh...
Yes.
How, how much time do they need?
Just timing is important for us, you know, on the project.
Um, we would have to look at the calendars. It is too late to get it on the next agenda. Um, we'd have to see if there's any availability on the agendas for December, um, but we'd have to get back to them. It would have to, it's going to be re-noticed regardless, um, but we'd have to look into the dates.
So it looks like December 20th and then your, possibly December 4th.
So...
Potentially, we'd have to also confirm with staff availability.
Got it, okay.
I have a question, so, uh, in the, at this situation, do you prefer this council to deny your application and send you to the city council?
We are not, we are not denying. We're not making a decision like that.
No, I'm, uh, talking about the...
Is there an option? Let me ask the city attorney.
No, 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 I'm referring to the original, uh, staff, this, uh, the comments that they said, they, they were saying that their, the staff is, uh, denying, uh, what the report says, so that's what I'm referring to.
Decision has to be made by the hearing officer.
Just to be clear, uh, Planning Commission members, um, the city attorney's office is advising the Planning Commission to take one of those two options. Um, the Planning Commission can hear this tonight, but we are, this is just our advice, um, that you do not have the necessary information to make this decision tonight, but it is entirely in your discretion whether you want to move forward with it. But again, you know, our recommendation is to remand, but a compromise perhaps would be to continue it until the next available Planning Commission meeting.
Uh, one thing, thanks, sir, for your comment. I'll, I'll let you sit back. I do have a, thank you. Uh, I do have a question from, from our staff. So, uh, from what I understood, that some information just was developed regarding this? No. So can you give us a bit more information about it? Thank you.
So, um, our office was, was just, um, we were just brought in basically to this item, and unfortunately, um, that's why, you know, we couldn't intervene sooner and, um, prevent everyone from coming out tonight. Um, but, but more to the point, uh, in reviewing the staff report, um, there is, you know, some evidence that, that the applicant provided regarding whether this, uh, the buildings on this site are historic, and there's some evidence, um, provided by an outside source that, uh, this is, uh, is historic. So there's, you know, but there, it, there needs to be a threshold determination made by, uh, either the hearing officer or the Planning Commission, um, that this is or is not definitively a historic resource, a discretionary historic resource, because as the, um, applicant pointed out, it is not listed.
Thank you.
But it can still be considered a historic resource under the California Environmental Quality Act if the lead agency, which is the city in this case, uh, determines that it is historic. And once that threshold determination is made, which our office believes has to be made, um, at an early stage in the CEQA process, that's what triggers the requirement to go out and do an environmental impact report, and then at that point, um, the project can be fully evaluated. So you're not really even going to necessarily be reaching the project merits, um, if you choose to continue and the evidence comes back, but we need to provide the Planning Commission with the evidence that it needs and the analysis that it needs to make that threshold determination.
Please go ahead.
I have a question for city attorney. Uh, you know, there is a report from Kaplan and Kaplan, uh, which I know them to be a very reputable, uh, firm, and I think their report is indicating that there is no historical, uh, significance, uh, here, and then, there is no recording of any, uh, historical, uh, building or any type of a, uh, you know, background, uh, supporting that. So what is it that you're, uh, I know that you are saying that there might be some other factors that may come in to do that, but I thought, based on, I mean, if, prior, before, if there was no report, but if there's a report, that reputable firm has determined that there is no historical background on this building, then what is it that you're gonna bring to this table that is gonna be different?
Okay, so, yes, there is a report that the applicant did, um, and there is another, uh, you know, letter and some analysis done by an outside, you know, I don't want necessarily to label this person as an expert, but that's what staff, you know, has determined, the planning hearing officer determined that this was an outside expert that provided their own evidence. And under CEQA, the, uh, decision-making body has to, whether it's the planning hearing officer or the planning commission, has to weigh that evidence, um, against each other and determine, um, you know, taking the evidence as a whole, you know, not just speculation, but, you know, concrete expert facts and opinions. Um, is there enough there? Is there substantial, what they called substantial, evidence to make a determination that this, although not listed, although not officially, you know, called out in a survey or anything like that, that, yes, this is a historic resource? Now, that doesn't necessarily mean at the end of the day, when, after the EIR is done, that that's gonna be the conclusion, but the EIR takes a deep dive into that question and then, uh, you know, does that analysis and then, uh, an appropriate decision can be made, depending on what the EIR concludes.
Um, may I, I, I do have something to say. So, so this is my dilemma here. If we kick this back to the hearing officer, then the applicant might need to go through this process again, then come back to us and then go to city council, which, as they mentioned, it delays, um, and I don't know who's responsible for the fees. I am trying to see what would minimize that delay, and the way, and I'm thinking out loud because I wanna make this a bit more, um, kind of work for everyone, especially if this has been kind of, uh, dragged for a while. Um, I, I don't know if, again, recommendation, if it would be possible, but something like, while the, uh, staff is doing the review, for this item to go to city council, so it avoids the item being kind of kicked back three steps. I don't know if that's, I know that normally we have the process to go through step by step, uh, and if we do have to make a decision here, meaning we have to, planning commission has to hear and give a recommendation, maybe that's the best way to go forward, because by the time, if, if there is an, uh, appeal again, uh, you will be able to complete your, your decision and, uh, send it to, um, council. My only worry is if we kick it back to our hearing officer, then we would have, they would have to kind of do the steps again. And I'm not sure what, uh, I can't remember when the hearing office and decision was made.
September.
Okay.
September. Um, I don't believe that, you know, we can bypass the Planning Commission... I don't believe that, you know, we can bypass the planning commission, but, um, but if, but if a continuance sounds like it might be the best option here, so that we can come back with a more robust staff report, with some, some more robust analysis and some evidence, and, you know, perhaps some revised motions, and, you know, potentially, uh, individual briefings if the planning commission requests, because it is a pretty meaty item.
Uh, my other, uh, question, concern is, we're kind of talking about the next month, but realistically, especially with the holiday season just around the corner, I don't know if that's realistic for you guys. So, I think it would be, it would be good to be able to give them a realistic timeline. If, I think we might be kind of looking into doing a continuation, and, and if that comes here, and then for any reason it needs to go further, that delays. So, I'm just curious, you said sometime in December, um, looking at the calendar, um, 4th or, as you mentioned, uh, availability of staff, it would be 4th or the 18th of December, and I don't even know if we normally hold meetings at that time, so...
Madam Chair, I think you could ask...
Can, can we continue this to a date certain?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Then we pick a date.
So, December 4th.
The earliest that we are all here.
But I wanna make sure that staff will be able to review this information.
Well...
Madam Chair, I think it's more of the, um, city attorney coming back with their comments, because it's not being remanded back to the, uh, the staff.
Okay.
But it's from the city attorney's office, so I think you can continue this as a date certain.
Okay.
And then make it a solid.
I think Ms. Nukian has something.
Yes, um, I was just gonna suggest we could take a brief, maybe one or two-minute recess while planning staff checks, and then we could convene and come up with a date.
Yes.
I just also wanna add that we could continue it to, planning commission could continue it to a date certain, however, we would have to re-notice it anyway.
Yes.
So, um, that, the, and the 4th, I believe, and the 18th would both be, uh, dates that would meet their noticing deadlines.
Just FYI, the 4th will be the last day I'm gonna be here, and then I'm gonna be gone until mid-January.
Okay.
So, the 4th is...
So, let's take, uh, let's take a short recess while planning staff checks that. Thank you. Welcome back to, uh, the November 6th, uh, planning commission meeting of City of Glendale, and we took a little short break, and the staff is back with some information for us.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. So, we did take a look at the calendars and just staff availability. Um, the first available meeting, um, that we could continue this to would be December 18th. I know Commissioner Fuentes, he won't be here.
Yeah, not gonna be here.
We'd wanna see if we'd have a quorum that day, but that would be the first available date.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Madam Chair. Let's say we decide to hear the case tonight, because yours, uh, is only like a recommendation to either remand or continue the case. We decide to hear the case tonight and make a decision. I, I have feeling, no matter which direction we go, somebody's gonna appeal the case anyway. So, my feeling is, I'm, I'm ready to go, you know, with the case and hear it.
Madam Chair, I'm, uh, with Commissioner Fuentes on that, uh, because whatever the, uh, review or the comments that you'll be making, I think you can take that to the, the next level, if it goes to the next, next level. So, I'm, I'm ready to hear the case.
Um, I, I am there with you. I thought I asked that question, but I, uh, maybe I wasn't very clear. Um, I think that would be the best way moving forward, actually. With that, um, we don't need, do we need to take a vote on that before we continue, or we just, no? Okay. Then with that, can we have the, um, staff presentation, please? And thank you all for being patient.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Toledo.
Thank you.
Okay, well, know what the case is. So, it's, it's been on the screen for a while. So, um, it's the appeal of the planning hearing officer's decision. The case was heard back on Septem, excuse me, uh, back in July, and the decision was September 17th, 2024. And the requests were for conditional use permit and a variance, variances under the one case. So, just briefly, I'll try to go through these slides quickly. So, in terms of the location, it's located in the R1250 Zone Multifamily. It's located on the corner of Central Avenue in Glen Oaks, between Fairview and Glen Oaks on the west side of the street. There's an existing church there now, as previously noted. The information's in the staff report, and there's also the daycare. Specifically, though, the variance is associated in the requests for the conditional use permit, and the variance are specific to the church building. Okay? Again, in terms of the size, 1.2 acres. We've talked about the frontage. It has frontage on three streets, Central, Fairview, and Glen Oaks, existing development. It's a two-story church built in 1941. It's approximately 7,800 square feet. And there is an existing protected tree on the site, and the report goes into a little bit of detail regarding that. But let's move forward. In terms of the request, it's the conditional use permit required by code. They are proposing to expand it. So, therefore, a conditional use permit is required for a place of worship. And then the variances that are being requested is to remove and replace the existing church tower with an overall building height of 55 feet, constructing a new accessory building consisting of an open altar with an overall height of 48 feet 5 inches, 5 inches to the top of the dome. And they're proposing to construct multiple 24-foot-high columns and architectural elements, and an 18-foot-high entry fence and gateway along and within the new outdoor courtyard. They're also proposing to construct a 1,156 square-foot accessory building with an outdoor altar. They're proposing to expand the floor area of the existing church and construct the new fence ranging from 5 inches from the streetfront property line at its closest point to 12 feet 4 inches. Yes, 12 feet 4 inches. And to construct a new accessory building, which is that new outdoor altar with located 0 feet from the southerly interior setback. I could go into all the code requirements, but that's already in your report. So, I'm just going to move on because I want to just get straight to the appeal. Okay? So, I'm going to kind of jump through all these slides because you have all these diagrams. This is what the church is going, proposed to look like. So, let me just kind of jump quickly the summary of the planning hearing officer's decision. So, as noted in the report, the planning hearing officer determined that the fourth, that all the findings, for example, for the conditional use permit, the one finding, could it be made because, in terms of it being consistent with the general plan, and mainly because the request is not consistent with the historic preservation element, unless the city determines that there are no historic resources on the project site. And again, as we've heard, it surfaced because new information was brought forward to the record. So, as a result, then that's why the hearing officer determined that the findings could not be made for both the CUP and the variances. Again, partially, some could, some not, but at the end of the day, all four findings need to be made for both entitlements, for the conditional use permit and the variances. And the determination whether or not this specific building is a historic resource, that is the question. Okay? So, for those reasons, the hearing officer denied the request. In terms of the conditional use permit, the analysis in the appeal, the appellant contends that there were violations of the law and the procedures. The hearing officer, again, did not fulfill their mandatory duty, and the hearing officer refused to consider certain information or facts. In terms of the appellant's argument, they mainly, they focused their argument on the historic report that was originally submitted and part of the record prepared by Kaplan Chaplin, which is also included as an attachment. The report concluded that the project site is not historic. It's not in a register, hasn't been surveyed, etc. The appellant contends that the hearing officer only considered information presented by outside party and not considered the facts that were submitted to the hearing officer, again, specifically the historic report. So, therefore, they believe that no fair valuation of whether the property is considered historic or not was properly valued, and the hearing officer only considered one side of the argument. In terms of evidence included in the record, let me move on to get to my slide. So, evidence included into the record does suggest that the project site could be historic. The hearing officer determined that a fair argument can be made, but the demo and alterations could have a potential significant effect on the environment. And the applicant didn't specifically address the information contained in the comment letter that was submitted, again, indicating that the building is potentially historic. So, therefore, the hearing officer determined that additional environmental review would be necessary. Again, this information's in your report, so I don't want to be redundant. It's there if there's any additional questions in terms of the staff's analysis of the appeal, the appellant's arguments presented. It's the same, pretty much, that I just articulated. The information was presented in the report prepared by the historic consulting agency or firm indicating it's not historic. Additional information was submitted in the comment letter by Francesca Smith indicating that specifically this building is potentially historic. So, that's why, again, more evaluation or sequoia review is necessary. And that's basically the meat of this appeal. If there are any additional questions for staff, let me just make sure. Okay, yeah. So, again, the applicant doesn't address if substantial evidence has been provided. And so, but at the end, the hearing officer did consider all the information presented. Again, we need to do further analysis of sequoia. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. But lastly, staff is recommending that the planning commission sustain the hearing officer's decision to deny both the CUP and the variance, again, based on the appropriate level of sequoia analysis not being completed, and that needs to be done.
Thank you for, thanks for the presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we open to comments? I see.
I reserve my questions after.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to open the public comment period. I'm going to ask Mr. Adam Akatatian? Did I say? I'm sorry, that J looked like a C. I apologize.
Yeah, at this time, I don't want to stretch any longer. Basically, I want my, our consultant, who we, you know, we were, at the beginning, we weren't, we were assured that, you know, this is, we knew it that this is not historic. So, she didn't get a chance to present her points when the letter arrived at the 11th hour, just like I said it. Now is the time that we can hear from her. And then, you know, I reserve time if there's any questions or additional information that we have to provide, I would like to provide that to you.
Thank you, sir. I think that is Pam O'Connor, correct? Hello?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Pam O'Connor. And by the way, this is my second planning commission of the day because, I mean, because I'm the chair of the LA County Regional Planning Commission, and we had our meeting at 9:00 a.m. So, when you started with your script, it like brought back the morning to me. But my day job, the day job that I get paid for, is architectural historian with Kaplan Chen Kaplan. And I'm here to speak about the building and what we found. And I'm going to quickly run through the criteria for designation for eligibility in Glendale. Is it identified with important events? Does it exemplify significant contributions to broad cultural history, historic heritage? Well, the original church was built in 1923. That's been demolished. In 1941, this church was built. At that time, there were over 50 churches in Glendale. There are also several Methodist churches, several congregations. This was not the only one. And there is no evidence, no evidence provided, that this church influenced the growth of the Methodist religion or religion in general in Glendale. Criteria B is associated with persons or groups who significantly contributed to its history. Again, no evidence that there's any individual associated with the church, its operation, its organization, or its congregation who had any ongoing or sustained relationship to the church. So, their work and their participation. There's no one who is associated with the church who has any historic significance. And then we got test A, which is the architectural. There are two parts to that. It embodies distinctive and exemplary characteristics of an architectural style, architectural type, or period or method of construction, or possesses high artistic value. Well, this building, kind of the modern Art Deco elements, was built in the early 1940s. That's a relatively late period for Art Deco. The only really significant Art Deco elements are actually fairly separate from each other. One are on the tower, the others are around the corner on the Fairview at the entrance. Other than that, if you walk along Central Avenue, the facade is very limited. There's no architectural detailing, no, nothing that really tells you that it's Art Deco. The, again, they're two disparate features, and they're not related. And in fact, the largest expanse, again, of that church is, does not have architectural detailing. The school building, which was built in 1951, that's 10 years later, that was a stripped-down version of mid-century modern. There's no relationship in terms of architectural styling to those buildings, to the school buildings and the recreation building and the church. So, it's not a historic district. And another part of criteria C is that it represents the work of a master architect whose genius influenced his or her profession. That is your Glendale criteria. The architect was Harry Pierce. He was an architect. He had a full career, but he was not listed, by the way, he was not listed on the 1941 permit, but he worked and designed the building. He was a career architect, but he was not a master architect. There are no studies. There's no monographs. There are no periodical articles. There's no bibliographies regarding his body of work. He is not a master architect. And, I mean, there's no evidence provided that his work is, in designing churches, was significant or exceptional. No major awards, no awards were identified related to his work in general, much less this church. And then you get to integrity. And the church has undergone numerous alterations over the decades. There have been interior remodels, the window replacements in 2009, repair of fire damage, additions built along that Central Avenue, the main focus that people see when they're driving around or traveling around this area. There's, has changed the characteristic and feeling of it, which frankly, had very limited, or no architecturally detailing along that. So, this bell tower, by the way, is a typical element of many church designs. So, singling out a bell tower, many churches have that. It's not, it doesn't meet the criteria for historic eligibility because there's a bell tower associated with it that was added at a later date. So, I think there is substantial evidence because there's no evidence to support it, other than anecdotal evidence about, you know, somebody spoke there or, I can't remember the other elements. But there's no strong evidence about his career either. Again, he was a person who had a full career as an architect. But again, nothing that rises him to the level of master architect, nothing that shows awards, nothing that shows recognition. So, yeah, you know, if every career architect of building that they do, a church does, is not, doesn't rise to the threshold of meeting the criteria to be eligible as a, to the Glendale Register of Historical Resources. So, anyway.
Thank you for that, ma'am. Thank you. Before you leave, I want to see if any of our commissioners have questions from you, since you're the expert in this. Any questions?
Rather than a question, I just have a comment. I am familiar with Ms. O'Connor's work and some of the questions I had, I think you, during your presentation, have answered a few of those things. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Next person, our next card I have is Mr. Haroud Urockian?
Markarian.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. Markarian, and you are the owner of the property. Hello?
Yeah, I'm Haroud Markarian. I'm the executive director for the Western Diocese, owner of this property. I want to thank you for making the decision to hear this matter today because if we were going to be dragged here a third time, I think I want to put on record and reserve my right to be designated as a historical expert in Glendale, having read through and gone through so many of these hearings. But I appreciate you guys taking the time. I want to echo some of the words that our architect earlier mentioned. We've took the time since 2022 to knock on the door of the city, city management, employees, go through professional consultants to make sure that this building is not historic. And to have a second time now try to be derailed by pure speculation that this building can be historic, or some parts of it can be historic, is quite unfair. And our community has been waiting for this project to come to fruition for a long, 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 long time. And I hope this board makes that decision today, and we realize what our community has been longing for for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. Markarian. Next card I have in hand is Damian Sullivan, followed by Francesca Smith. And just so you know, each member of the public has three minutes for comments. Hello?
Hi. Thanks for taking the time. This is Zoe Help. It's okay if you're here with me.
No, that's okay. Just introduce yourself, please.
My name is Damian Sullivan. I'm a resident of Glendale. And I am actually sorry I'm not following Francesca Smith because I believe that it's her research that is the, of the most paramount importance to your decision that you're trying to make. I think that I often speak on behalf of preservation issues in front of the city council, and I've done my own fair share of working on the landmarking of the Route 66 gas station in Eagle Rock and a lot of interesting buildings that have cultural landmark status. These things are important because I love what the treasures that we have in our community are, and I hate to see them go away when they are a contribution. That is a treasure that we should continue to treasure. And I think that this is a very interesting project because I think that when you're, when you're demolishing something that's been around for decades, I mean, you know, talking about decades and decades, this is, everyone's driven past this church. It's a, it's a beautiful streamlined, modern Art Deco church that has been recognized by architectural boards in New York and many other peer groups as architecturally an amazing example of its form of architecture. It's, with all respect to the applicants, you can hire a consultant who, you know, is, there's bias if it's just the applicants. You've got extreme research here from somebody who has provided you ample evidence that this is a legitimate historic resource that does require and deserve sequoia and further examination, the proper examination. Before we, once you tear it down, it's gone forever. 8,000 troops, you know, were, lived and stayed within this church during the war. I mean, there were Academy Award-winning authors who read from this church, you know. There are many things happened in this church, and it was, it's documented, the assumption that it had for the Methodist church in Glendale. So, it's part of the story, the origin stories and the growth story of Glendale, just like other, you know, things like Sears that were part of our life for decades and decades. It deserves a further look, and it deserves to actually not be demolished. You've heard the expression, the greenest building is the one that's already standing. We're not talking about, you know, the housing crisis.
Your time's actually up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for hearing.
Was that ding? Is that what, I'm sorry. I didn't catch it. No, I didn't catch it either. Thank you. And you know what? Can you please introduce yourself? Do you want to introduce, no? Okay. Zoe, you're the youngest speaker we've had.
I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. All right. The next person we have is Francesca Smith. And I'll be careful with the ding. I apologize. We used to have like, we used to have like the colors that changed.
The timer.
Yes, the timer. Hello?
Thank you very much. Is the microphone working without the little thing?
Is the microphone working without the little thing?
Wait one second. Let's see what. All right.
Ready?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Francesca Smith. I'm a qualified architectural historian, which takes both experience and training. I've been doing this for about 40 years and I recently retired from the state of California where I was a principal architectural historian for that, for the agency. I'm a former member of the Design Commission in Glendale. I'm not paid. I'm not part of the team. I've been doing this on my own. I'm sorry that you all didn't get a chance to ask my colleague Ms. O'Connor how many properties in Glendale she has found to be historically significant. I believe the answer is zero. I have a list of about five properties that she has evaluated, all of which she has found not significant, all of which have been questioned by the Glendale Historical Society and one or two staff disagreed with. I had a little presentation on substantial evidence in SEQA that was mentioned. As you know, it includes enough relevant information and reasonable inferences that a fair argument can be made to support a conclusion. My conclusion in my many, many pages of reports, I apologize, is that this property is eligible in the city of Glendale to be a historic district under criteria A, C, D, F, and H. That's five of the criteria. You need to meet one. To be eligible as part of a historic district, every window need not be perfect. In fact, windows that she was describing as being changed were changed and later legalized. In the consultant's report, the first report, no architect was found. Finally, I Googled this church with the word architect and came up with this architect's name. This architect has worked all over LA. He did design a lot of churches. At least five of them are historically significant. And interestingly, in this case, he worked with a parishioner, or I guess a congregant, on the design. The Tower of Light did receive national recognition. It was called a Tower of Light, which is confusing. As you saw, it's on, it was on a full color postcard. There are no other postcards I could find of churches in Glendale other than Forest Lawn. It received an award from an ecumenical group in New York. Her report didn't compare it against other streamlined modern and Art Deco buildings in Glendale. Also, mid-century modern, which was the, the school buildings were designed by Orr Inslee Senefield. They did five other properties in Glendale. And I believe Mr. Orr was on the planning commission, interestingly. A lot of their properties have been found to be eligible in Survey LA and in the South Glendale Survey. Five of this architect, who she says, may I have one more minute or a half a minute?
Yes, please go ahead.
SEQA applies to all discretionary projects. It doesn't matter whose project it is. I'm not against this project. I feel bad for this applicant that they've spent money and time. I've spent a whole lot of time. I spent half a day at the library finding these photos. I checked the library and nobody else had been there. So I was the one who found the architect. I was the one who found out this information. And it's eligible in the, in the city of Glendale as a historic district, which makes the SEQA issue much different. Thank you very much for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
No, that's, we usually, the questions are usually for the applicant. But you know what? Did you guys have questions? No, thank you. We can call you back if anything. I don't see any cards. If anyone needs to do any, any public comment, please fill out a green card so you can come up and express your thoughts about this project. In the meantime, do we have anything online?
No, we don't. We, no callers.
I'm sorry?
No callers.
No callers. Okay. With that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Yes.
They do get a rebuttal.
That's right. I am sorry. It's been a bit longer. Thanks for reminding me.
Let the record shower that I returned it.
Yes, you're correct. So we'll have the, I don't know if it's the applicant that's going to come back or Ms. O'Connor.
Well, as a matter of fact, would you like to address some of those? Or should I go forward?
Yeah. Okay. You know, the, what we heard about this historic issue with Francesca Smith, there is no, there's no evidence, you know. And the letter just handed to me that, you know, the research that she did. And she's bringing up some examples that are irrelevant to this project. And this is a watercolor postcard. It's not photo, you know. And again, I would state that the, the first permit was pulled in 1940, 41. You know, that was before the World War II. So nobody could have been congregated there around World War II if there was no building. So the first building been demolished in 1948. There was an additional L-shaped building, which was not the church. So the church was built in 1940. It shows in the Glendale permits on the Copland Report. In 1950, when they piecemeal these towers again, you know, put the tower. So, and then they demolished the building, which was the original church that was existed on the property. So 1950, World War II was over also, you know. So there was no war. But this, it's been ongoing changes on this building. As Pam has mentioned, there was a fire on the building. When you have an evidence, we presented to staff, the entire ground floor on the east side of it was blackened when we opened some drywall to do some leakage repair. And also, there was an evidence from the structural engineer at the hearing with the planning hearing officer that the tower, because it was added later on, it wasn't structurally integrated with the building itself. It was some sort of a separation there. There was a little gap. But again, you know, the project, we're not reviewing the project now, but the intention not to demolish the church. We're just replacing the tower with, which is providing the adequate altar space. You know, the current use of the altar will not work with the Armenian Apostolic Church. That's the whole point. Otherwise, we can reuse it. And we're adding the two elements into the, in fact, we're reducing the capacity of the church. We're adding the two elements, which is baptismal font and a prayer altar. So that is much needed in this, you know, in the worship. So we're, in fact, we're adding into it. One other thing that it comes to my mind that I want to bring it up right now is the occurrence of the restrooms. There were a couple of restrooms on the ground floor, which is not normally you see at the churches, you know. So with a project like this, you know, that we're building outdoor element, which is the altar for the school prayers, we're removing, we're relocating all these restrooms outside of the church, which is very common in the, in the, in the Christian religion. So those are the changes we're proposing. The main naval section staying the same. A lot of the elements are staying the same, you know. And windows, as you know, have been replaced many times. So that's about the architecture. But again, this is, as Mr. Markarian has mentioned, just purely speculation. And, and what we see, you know, this thing's coming up at the 11th hour. There's no other intention than to drag this project on and on and on, you know. So we would like you to make a decision today and I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. With that, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And I will ask if any of the commissioners have questions from staff before we start deliberating.
I just have one very simple question, Ms. Toledo. When you had a hearing, you, Ms. Francesca Smith, she came up to speak, correct?
Correct.
Did Ms. O'Connor come up and speak during your hearing?
I don't believe so.
You just had her report.
Correct. We just had the report.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm open to hear on your thoughts, colleagues.
I'll just mention about the conditional use permit. It's a church use to a church use. And one, one of the reasons you deny the conditional use permit is because of this historical and the additional evidence.
Correct. So two out of the four findings for the CUP could not be made.
But it's still the same use, church to church.
Correct.
So that was a question. And that was clarified. Thank you for that. I don't think we have a motion unless someone has a motion. If we have a motion, I'm here to, I'm ready to hear if you guys want to discuss.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, if you're inclined to sustain the decision, there's some additional information in an amended motion that we would add.
Of course.
Either way.
I'm sorry. Would you repeat that? Yes.
So whatever the planning commission's decision is, we would need to add additional, we'd recommend adding some additional language to that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I think I saw somewhere if we were to reverse the decision, then I think you needed some sort of a time to also walk up their language, correct?
No, we can provide that to you tonight.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, I'll go first.
I'm hearing.
Okay. This, this is very sensitive matter. And, you know, I, I hear both sides. But, you know, I'm here to make the decision on, you know, what I see. I know, you know, some of the things that, that could be viewed as a historical significance, historical resource. And, you know, anything that is brought up, you know, you know, to, to reflect that, I think, you know, the much respect has to be paid attention to. At the same time, I think we live in a city that is mosaic of different ethnic groups. You know, I being one from our Korean-American heritage. And, you know, having the, the church as a Armenian church, to have the significance of their own design church that can relate to their identity, I think is very important. And I think much respect also needs to be paid for that. And so what I heard is it's more of a, yes, there has to be more study to determine whether or not this qualifies as a historical building. Yet this project's been going on too long and is causing significant economic hardship, in my opinion. And I don't think, you know, to my satisfaction, heard enough to alter my thoughts. And I have to just stick to my assumption as to, you know, what, you know, if it's not registered and if there was study performed by the, you know, expert. I, I know that both are, you know, both of the speakers are experts. But, you know, that has presented, some of the questions I had was answered. So I am leaning towards reversing this decision.
Thank you, sir. Yes, commissioners.
And in addition to what Commissioner Chang Li, I, I heard the fact that the property owner and the design architect did their due diligence prior to securing and buying the property. I'm also, I also like the fact that Ms. O'Connor came here, gave us additional evidences that we need to get us into a clearer insight into the building. And basically, the use has been there for, for so many years. It's a matter of just altering a few things and adding, you know. It's not really throwing away the existing use or anything that's been happening there since 1940 or 41. So I'm also ready to, and inclined to reverse the decision of the hearing officer.
Thank you, ma'am. And did you have anything to add?
Yeah.
Before I go? Thank you.
My comment is not going to be, it will be for the future of the use of this property. I noticed that this is going to be daycare center. And one thing that I want to mention is that with today's families that are struggling, the high cost, two parents have to work to support the family. Having a daycare in that part of the Glendale, it will really help the average family that they live and work. And I think by denying this appeal, it will be hurting some families that they really need the support of the church. And, you know, I'm supporting the two commissioners' decision.
Thank you. And being the chair, I get to go last, which is fantastic. Because you guys, it's hard, it's hard for, to be first. I think Commissioner Lee put it very, very well. So, you know, the, and also Commissioner Fuentes. The property owner has done their due diligence they've, you know, before purchasing. And it seems like this is, this is coming a bit, you know, late in the game after, you know, they've, they've been working with the city. And, you know, at this point going forward, I am hoping that, you know, this is going to be a clear path. But I wanted to mention something which I don't know. And if I'm incorrect, please correct me. This is actually going to be the first Armenian church in Glendale that's going to be the part of the Ekmazin church. The Armenian community in Glendale, even though there's a big population of Armenians in Glendale, actually do not have the Armenian, an Armenian church where the Gatorigos resides in Ekmazin. So this is going to be a first for a city with a lot of Armenian residents that actually don't have a place to go to worship. We do, the central church, just for those who don't know, that's a, that's a different Gatorigos. And I don't know what the correct word that is. Policy, you're correct. I should know that. It's a completely different policy. And for anyone who's interested, you know, they can do a little bit of more digging. But yeah, so in the, in the area, my understanding is that the closest one would be the cathedral in Burbank, which is pretty far. And I believe there's a smaller church in Pasadena. So this is, I think, as the commissioner mentioned, it's important to the community. But that was a different note. A note of the conditional use permit and the variance. You know, I think my colleague said it well. The church use has been there. So conditional use permit, it's, it's a switch. And the evidence of the historic designation, And the evidence of the historic designation, I think this should have been brought to light a bit earlier before the applicant has gone this far out. And with that, I am ready to actually move forward with it and support the revision of the decision.
Madam Chair, I think we need to hear from the City of Tunis office.
I believe so too, because they want to add some, some comments to the, to the motion. We haven't made a motion yet, but I think you were trying to make some changes before we go there?
To incorporate her comments.
Okay.
Taking it to our motion, yeah.
Let's go.
Would the planning commission be sustaining or reversing?
Reverse.
Okay, thank you. So, so it would be, I'm just going to do one of the motions and there's two different motions and then one is for the CUP and one is for the variance, but I'm just going to read one of them. Okay. Move by Commissioner Blank, second by Commissioner, that upon review and consideration of materials, so after the words hereby, we would, we would like to add finds that one or more of the buildings at the project site are not historic resources under California SEQA guidelines, Section 15064.5A4, comma, and sustains. And then the rest of the motion is the way it's written.
Madam Chair, I move to incorporate Ms. Nukin's comments into the motion. And so I'm making the motion.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. And can we have the roll call, please?
And that's for the CUP?
I think that's for both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to, that's.
Unless you do need us to do two separate mo, do you need us?
Modification.
Okay.
That's why we could read, one pertains to the variance, the other to the.
Yes. Thank you.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Minasian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
And Chairperson Shabazzian.
Yes. And with that, the decision has been reversed. The next item on the agenda is Community Development Department updates.
Sure, thank you. So we do not have anything scheduled for the next Planning Commission meeting of November 20th. However, we do have something coming before you on December 4th.
Okay.
It originally was going to come before you on the 20th, but it's being pushed back. I'm sorry, you guys, we're still in a hearing.
The meeting is almost done. Few more minutes.
I'm so sorry, sir.
Thank you for being here.
You guys need to, one more.
Okay.
So the December 4th hearing, we will be bringing forth the, for your recommendation to council, objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use development in the city. So that is scheduled for the December 4th hearing.
Thank you for that. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes.